To call this June 13th, 2022 Slovenia Board of Education meeting to order. Jeff, will you call the roll?
Ms. Huffman.
Here.
Mrs. Conklin.
Here.
Mrs. Lavalet.
Here.
Mr. Feller.
Here.
Mrs. Johnson.
Here.
And we'll go ahead for the Pledge of Leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will start with our superintendent's report. Dr. Miley.
Thank you, Mr. Feller. Good afternoon, everyone, or good evening, I should say it at six o'clock. I just have one brief announcement, although we have a commendation coming up here shortly in the next item. I do want to celebrate that we have Northview and Southview students currently competing in Louisville, Kentucky. It's our national speech and debate team. And so we have all types of sunshine happening in Northwest Ohio and specifically Slovenia schools. So we wish the best of luck to our Northview and Southview students who are competing nationally this week down in Louisville, Kentucky.
Awesome. So next on the agenda, I'm really excited to do the commendations.
Thank you, sir. Again, I recommend item 3.1 is recognition of achievement. Our Board of Education is proudly to recognize our 2022 Ohio High School Athletic Association Baseball Championship Team, the Northview Wildcats. For those of you who are in the room and may not have been able to participate, we had a playoff semifinal on Friday night. Who was there for that? That rocked. And then Saturday, we played against Grove City, and we sent them home. They got a trophy, but not like our trophy. And guys that looked great strapped in the front seat of the bus, I thought I had to have to protect it. It was so good, seatbelt and all. But we are so proud of each and every one of you, young men, and our coaching staff. Because, listen, you've made history in Slovenia. You brought us a title unprecedented in baseball. So thank you for your time, your devotion. Man, your fundamentals are untouchable, seriously. You look better than some of that other team over, like on the other side of the state that we won't talk about. Cleveland, that's what I was talking about. But honestly, your fundamentals are tight. I like baseball. I have Cs on my car because I'm really into baseball, but you guys just did it. You worked as individuals, and you worked as a team, and we are so proud of you. We know that two of your teammates couldn't be here tonight, but we want you to share this recognition with them. So we're going to come up after we do a vote to accept your and recognize your achievement. We're going to call you up. We're going to have a certificate for each of you, and we're going to shake your hand and all that good stuff. And thank you for your photo op. Because honestly, you guys knocked it out of the park, literally. And again, history has been made for Slovenia schools and Northview. And thank you for doing that for our kiddos, coaches, the mentoring. You put the student first before the athlete. Your time, your devotion, your practice in the alt gym. I've been able to see the patience you've given these young men. Because you have taught them lessons that will take them a lifetime. When they're challenged, they face it head-on. When it gets hard, you never give up. You stick with it, and it showed on the field. So thank you for making them young men, but better young men and better Wildcats. So thank you. So again, Mr. President, Mr. Feller, I recommend item 3.1, the recognition of our 2022 championship baseball team. I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations. It was great games. Great games.
I have goosebumps. I do.
Jeff, can you call the roll?
Ms. Huffman.
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavalet.
Yes.
Mr. Feller.
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you. So, gentlemen, we're going to call you up. I'm going to hand you a certificate, shake your hand, and we have a team award. Coach Farquhar, we have your award team award. Got to give you a hug. Hug, so proud of you and our work. There's a team award for you, and I'm also going to give you the certificates for the other two boys that aren't here, Gino and Alex. All right? Thank you so much.
We'll get some Gino's mom back.
Oh, Gino's mom is here?
She's right there.
Oh! What? Hey, Gino's mom? We will give you a gift certificate.
I appreciate that.
Congratulations. That's wonderful. So next, we have Brody Ayers. Brody Ayers. We have Riley Ayers. We're proud of you. We have Grace Rappert. We have Ben Crooks. We have Kayden Dacker. Welcome. And we have Nathan Disardan? Disardan. Congratulations. We have Garrett Draper. Congratulations. Helping us make history. We have Keegan Draper. Congratulations.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you.
Aiden Hall.
Superman.
Superman. Chase Hardout Harrell. Harrell. Harrell Harrell. Tell me you like to say it properly.
Harrell.
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 Harrell. Hunter Lehman. Hunter. Congratulations. Lifetime member. You know you guys are going to be talking about this like until you're 85 years old.
What if you already are?
Right? Well, I mean.
Except you're not.
Roman Marks for us. For care. Austin Peck. Congratulations. Gaykey. I still want that. Like, I want that. I can find it, right? Alexander Prima. Sorry, I just need some kinetic spelling. It's not such a name. I'm just going to go with Alex. Good.
I know, I suppose we need more.
All right. Brandon Steele. Joshua Springer. Brandon Tackey. Oh, my gosh, it says British. You know what? I need to go out. I don't know. It's a great thing. Holland Fantasy. And Garrett Zimmerman. Coaches, thank you. You're awesome with what you do. They make an impact on the show, and it's like, we are so, so grateful. And boys, fuck all in. This is a great time. Just play it and laugh it all around. It's a great time to be a Wildcat. It always is a good time to be a Wildcat. Such a special pitch from you. So thank you for your time tonight. We're going to move on with the rest of our agenda. Feel free to stay.
You definitely want to go.
Give it now.
It's not that entertaining.
Oh, there you go. But listen, we thank you for coming and enjoy the rest of your evening if you don't want us to hang out today. And thanks, Mom, for showing up for your time. We appreciate it. We really do.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Give the kids backpacks. Yeah, give them backpacks.
Okay. Mark, we got that, right? We're going to.
Listen, you can sign up for public participation, and you can speak.
Speak about it.
Right over there. Feel great.
You got your good job.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Wow. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
I have some good one training. Just like, it's professional.
Nice.
I have goosebumps.
Yeah, that's awesome.
We're going to need a bigger room if the football team gets.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Her son played last year. He graduated last year.
Last year.
He's like in journalism or broadcasting at BG, so he's covered a lot of the games. So it's pretty.
Oh, nice. That's cool.
And her daughter plays softball, like, the grades. Daughter.
Yeah, she's on Place for Fusion.
That's she.
All right, so we are at the first opportunity for public participation.
They all love.
And they all love.
They all love.
So we are.
They already participated.
Yeah, they already participated. So we are back with you, Dr. Miley.
All righty, Mr. Feller, thank you so much. I recommend item 5.1, the acceptance of gifts. We have Denise Kaminski. She was generous to donate $1,000 to the Northview class of 2023. The money will be used to reserve the class City Convention Center for senior prom next year.
Awesome. I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
That is very generous.
That is very generous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, call the roll.
Ms. Huffman.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavalet.
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin.
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Feller.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 5.2, I recommend approval. The item includes our Northview and Southview high school graduates. The list is comprehensive of all of our students. But for those students that did not complete the requirements as of June 5th, those names have been removed. And as you know, our commencement was held, I think that was last weekend already. It's been a week already.
Yeah, two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks. Geez, time is flying. So I recommend approval of our senior graduates from Northview and Southview high schools. Class of 2022.
I'll move for approval of item 5.2.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm glad to see my daughter's still on the list.
All right, Mr. Feller.
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Huffman.
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavalet.
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.3. This is an annual item, and it's continuing our membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Lavalet.
Yes.
Ms. Huffman.
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin.
Yes.
Mr. Feller.
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 5.4, I recommend approval of payment in lieu for our transportation families. These are parental contracts for the 2122 school year. Unfortunately, they were not submitted in the fall due to the transition of our director and assistant director, interim director. But now our new director is bringing things up to speed. So I do recommend the approval for these contracts for this past school year.
I'll move for approval, item 5.4.
I'll second.
Discussion? So this was from last year?
This is 2122. So we're already, I'm already looking at 2223. So we wrapped up June.
And did we already pay these out?
They will be paid out.
Okay.
They have to be afford approved, my understanding, before they can be paid. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're not paid to the end of the year anyway. So, but usually we know ahead of time to approve it, and then you don't even know we pay it at the end of the school year. We're just.
Right.
Don't they, you have to like apply for it by a certain date?
Not, not really.
Isn't there, isn't there by statute? There's something by statute, and there's a certain date that they have to apply to receive a payment in lieu, or no?
I mean, they definitely have to apply and board approval. I guess I've never really looked at if there's a statutory date.
Are you sure this is statutory date? So we're saying that these people applied in the specified amount of time, and then we just sort of lost it?
I can't speak to that, I'm honest.
I can say with the transition between Joe Beck leaving and Deb taking over, and then Jim discovering it, it was not predestated for Jim. That is correct.
And so all the ones that say renewal, so the no's are.
They were renewals from the previous year.
Right, right. I'm asking about all the no's, so.
The no's are new for this past year?
That's what I'm assuming.
They would have been new in fall of '21, and they would have applied. But we don't know the reason, when they say no for a non-renewal, so I'm assuming they're saying no, they're not doing it.
Oh, so these are people were now. So, okay, so then, in that case, why would those even be in front of us? Because the only things that should be in front of us are ones we're paying, not ones we're not paying.
I can find that out for you.
Yeah, and I just see, I've never seen them. I, I thought renewal was like, okay, we paid them last year, and they renewed, and we're paying them again.
I did ask Jim specifically about it because I thought it was actually a typo. I thought these were applications for moving forward, and he said, no, they had never been forward approved in fall. So let me seek some clarification and make sure, and I can table it if it's something you want more information on before we move forward.
I mean, no, that's not it. If these people apply.
They did.
In the appropriate, you know, within.
I'm not familiar with the statute, though. I want to make sure we're not outside of the statute because I don't want to pay folks if.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering if it says no, is this just like the list from last year, and we're just saying, hey, let's pay it again?
Oh, no, that's not my understanding. That's not my understanding.
What is WSM?
West Side Montessori.
Oh, okay.
Is the date received, I'm assuming the date we received their request?
Yes.
Okay. So it looks like most of them were in September. Couple in November, one in January.
Yeah, and I'm wondering like that January, because I'm pretty sure that there's, it's by statute, but I could be wrong.
So should we table it to verify?
I think so. Just make sure we have the right information. I don't like to recommend something for approval if you don't have all the information you require.
Is that going to make it go out later than the others?
We'd be tabling it for all.
We'll table the whole thing.
Because we can't just, so if you're talking about like the one that.
The new ones I'm talking about.
Yeah, like the January 2022 one, and.
So I'm looking at the sheet, and again, how I interpret this, this is, these are people we're paying. They're just, it's just an extra indicator, oh, did we pay it again? Was these a repeat from last year?
But then, I guess my question would be, some of them say they received like nine 21 of 22. We haven't even hit nine 21 of 22, so are they, are they applying for next year? Is that what that nine 2122 is? Like, because it's June of 22.
Well, of course, it can't be on date received.
I'm guessing that was a typo. Should be 21.
Right.
So that I can't speak to.
Well, okay.
Because it's, yeah.
We probably need to verify that because I don't want to approve.
We don't want to approve something that's incorrect, and I want to make sure I.
And this is mine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And for that one, that kid, why are these kids in here twice? Well, for me, I have like.
Mary, Larry.
Well, that's the parents. They have two kids.
Locke and.
Oh, it's for, I see. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I got it.
When, when, so for next year, when would these come before us? Or when should they come before us?
I would say fall.
So would we have like an internal deadline that people would have to apply by?
I want to check to the statute. If there's a statute, I wouldn't want to follow the statute's deadline. I wouldn't want to stay on a fake, one that's too far ahead.
Right.
Because then they would say if the statute exists, as Julie said, then it's a false. They would be able to get paid anyway, even though we had an internal deadline. So I want to investigate the statute. What do you, do you recall when the statute might have been?
No, I'm looking right now.
Okay. She'll find it.
Okay.
She'll find it.
So we have a motion for approval. Do I need to amend the motion to table? Is that how it works?
I believe you do.
So then, I will amend, I will amend my motion to table item, what item is it? 5.4.
I'll second, I'll second that. Amend my second?
So, so now we're voting on the amendment, and then we'll actually vote on tabling.
Okay.
See, I'm going to.
So you want to call the roll on the amendment?
Certainly, if I can. Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavalet?
Yes.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
So now, so we have a motion on the table to table it. So now we need to vote on tabling it. I think I motion, I think you second, right? Is that still?
I second.
Yeah.
It's just interesting if we voted, what did we approve in the very first motion?
To amend it.
To amend my, my original.
That was what we changed to.
Yeah.
Got it.
So, yeah, the first, the vote we just took was to amend my original motion.
We could probably just slip this up and down and figure it out.
I'm, I'm actually.
I'm looking at the statute right now.
Well, I'm also concerned about the ones that say 22. I want to make sure those are typos before we approve it.
Yeah, I agree. Let's just hold it.
And it might be the statute I'm thinking of is when we're, when we're determined, when we're deciding is impractical.
I'm just thinking of Karen, who moves into our district October 15th. I would, I would think they could still apply, but I don't know. But, you know, I mean, that's.
Right.
I don't know. Never had that question.
That makes sense.
So we have, I think we have a motion and a second to table.
That's correct.
So I think we need, yeah, proposal.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavalet?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll put that back on the next agenda?
Yes, absolutely. We want to make sure those families that are entitled properly.
Yeah, of course.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. I recommend item 5.5, a revised mandatory of fee schedule. We have not increased the fees since the 1718 school year. And on the agenda, you will see they are noted on what they currently are to the proposed new fee schedule. These fees would take effect July 1st of this year.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Is there any way to accept payment electronically for open swim?
We need to really investigate that. I actually talked to Hollis about that. Right now, we do not have a system. She doesn't have like a credit card zip thing where we can do that. We would need to set up something through the treasurer's office to see if we could do it, something like an easy pay. It's pretty unreasonable to think for some of the folks who use our gym in the community, literally, we're walking in with $4 and getting cash. It's not a practical way.
Doesn't seem like it.
The one thing I will say, kudos to Hollis, who is the manager. She's also a teacher in our district. She has implemented an invoice system with some of our teams and the folks who are utilizing our pool. And she is utilizing QuickBooks now, which was not done in the past. So I know she has a desire to make it easier where if you want to pay for 15 swims upfront, just pay it and move forward.
That's great.
All right, call the roll.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavalet?
Yes.
And Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm recommending item 5.6, a new agreement between the Slovenia STEM Center and Slovenia schools. This is a two-year agreement. We are expanding STEM classes for our elementary students. As you may recall, this past school year was the first time all of our elementary students in grades 1 through 5 received one week of STEM lessons. This year, what we are doing, recommending moving forward, are those students in grades 1 and 2 still get one week, but we are expanding for two weeks for grades 3, 4, and 5 with the STEM Center. We want to continue to do work with the STEM Center because, as we have discussed, we would like to put STEM teachers in all of our elementary buildings. That's something we would like to make part of our specials or our like music, art, PE, library, and STEM so that we can really do a deep dive with instruction for these students. And that is recommendation. I'm getting a text from Jim now. Sure, typically, we can.
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, call the roll.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavalet?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 5.7, I recommend approval of our agreement with applied imaging for copiers and maintenance plan. This is a five-year contract, and we are going with a different company. As you may have heard from some of our labor management meetings, the copiers have been a topic of discussion. And so what we have done is, quite frankly, secured larger copiers that can take a more of a demand of copying, especially at our large buildings. The last copiers, they did last quite a while, some beyond their life, and some, they just weren't the best product from what we've heard from feedback. So we have done some adjustments to right-size the machines that are needed for high-capacity printing.
Dr. Miley, if I could.
Certainly.
So this was a bid process. We, there's usually a couple of main players in the copier business. It's just a world I always had to deal with. Anyway, with the help of Dr. O'Shea, we actually went up to bid with Applied Imaging Perry, Protech, and then Comdoc. And Applied Imaging is located in our area. The sales rep, Sean, that's the last name, is a resident of our district. We really got a low, low rate on our maintenance. Sean Glass. Yeah. Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a lady. There's two Shons. There's a Sean for Perry, and there's a Sean for Applied Imaging. But anyway, our, just as an example, our black and white copiers are going to go down to .0025 cents a copy, which is, and colors, which we don't have a lot of, is also very low. So they came in a competitive bid for new copiers, won the bid, and also, I mean, they really won it up Slovenia's business. And it showed. And so problem is, they could be sitting on a barge between here and California before we actually get them because that's an issue that districts are having with copiers because of the supply chain. But bottom line is, we, you hear approval here, we'll make sure that we're ready to, you know, we enter the contract, you know, we, we entered the contract, and hopefully we get them in before school starts, but that might be a little ambitious.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Uh, discussion? I have a question. So this, the fee that we got, is that, you said that's a five-year contract? So is that per year, or is that for the five years?
So the, the maintenance continues on locked in at these rates for five years. The purchase price is 190, like, thousand, just to buy them.
Oh, so that's the purchase, okay.
Yeah, just the purchase price, and, but the contract will continue, and then we will own them at the end of five years. And what typically happens, especially because we're going back to RICO, which the teachers like, I, most of us like better, they won't be out of their useful life in five years, so we get to keep them for a couple more years and save some, hopefully.
We've got a RICO in our office, I like it.
Is this a complete replacement of all the copiers in the district?
It is, and I think we upgraded a couple machines based on usage, because, again, just so you know, like, whether you knew this or not, but every copier count is, can be monitored in the, at the desktop, and it is actually, it is being monitored to see if there's extraordinary usage. We're not in a paperless society. As electronic as we are, there's a lot of copies being made in school districts, and we keep, 10 years ago, we thought it would go, it's not. We, we go to online curriculum, but then we still have to print a lot of stuff, and it's just a fact. What we have here, though, in your district, our district, Sylvanius, is not a lot of color. We've really held the line on that, and so that saves the district money by not, some people just print to a machine, it has to be colored, and then, you know, you pay for that. You got to really find a color copier in this, right? Like, you have the only one in the district, is that true?
I got to have Tim, God, he got it first.
All right, any more discussion? All right, Calderon.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavallette?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochrane?
Yes.
Thank you for that explanation. Further details, I recommend, I recommend item 5.8, it is a service agreement with Bittersweet Incorporated. This specific agreement is to provide extended school year services for a special needs student.
I'll move for approval, item 5.8.
I'll second.
Discussion? This is the same contract we guys.
This is a year, year contract, but it is based on student needs, so I'm assuming this is a student that's been with us, there was a contract last year for ESY as well.
Correct, yeah.
Some years, you'll have some more than others.
Right, okay. Any other discussion? All right, Calderon.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochrane?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavallette?
Yes.
And Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.9, which is a service agreement with Bittersweet Incorporated for the 2022-2023 school year, again, to serve special needs students throughout the school year next year, and this is an annual agreement.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Any discussion? Calderon.
Ms., Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavallette?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cochrane?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.10. This is to approve a substitute administrative assistant to the treasurer, and this position would be at a rate of $20 per hour.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So, is this?
I can explain this.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. I'm just curious as to.
And it's a position that was vacated, and it was posted before I started, when Ms. Chanks was still here, and it was a position that was requiring, we're looking for a four-year degree person at a salary position around $50,000. And we talked in the finance committee if you, that we didn't miss it. We took over, we didn't really want to fill that, because it was a good position, and maybe let the new treasurer fill it. Of course, we worked with Josh, and, and Dr. Miley, we figured out we could, we're doing it part-time, between Rose, I don't know if you all know Rose, who's been in our district, Albert, Albert, yeah, Albert, and Matt Hostler, they're both going to work part-time at, at a lower rate. It kind of fills their needs. It's kind of a good situation. He's working on an internship to become a treasurer, and so, and Mr. Koch is on, on board with this as well, obviously.
So, is there not an existing assistant to the treasurer?
No.
Okay.
Because we, we had posted that before.
And it didn't get filled?
Right, and it never got filled, yeah.
But then we kind of said, let's wait for Adam.
Right.
Because that makes sense, so he can hire his own person.
Are there benefits associated with this?
There are. We're kind of lucky with Rose, and Matt doesn't, still owns dad, so he doesn't need, so part-time kind of works, so. And, and that could lead into a full-time position if Adam would, or, I mean, you know, we'll see how that goes, that's up to him down the road.
And that works out, that's why it's labeled substitute as well. So that benefit question came up.
And it's also, it's also not a union.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, Calderon.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavallette?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cochrane?
Yes.
I recommend item 5.11, the rescinding of the appointment of Nathan Lust as assistant principal of Highland Elementary.
I'll move to. Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Calderon.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochrane?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavallette?
Yes.
And Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.12, the appointment of Nathan Lust as principal of Central Trail Elementary, as noted in the board agenda.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Calderon.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavallette?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cochrane?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.13, the appointment of John Ward, Ward as an assistant principal of Highland Elementary, as noted in the board agenda.
I'll move approval.
A second.
Discussion? Calderon.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavallette?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochrane?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.14, the resolution recognizing Juneteenth as a holiday for Sylvanius Schools employees that qualify.
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Any discussion? Calderon.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochrane?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavallette?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to know, John Ward would have been here, but he is out of town.
He said.
He sent emails.
Okay, good. Just wanted to let you guys know. I am up, I am going to ask for approval of items 6.1 through 6.5 on a consent agenda basis. 6.1 is licensed summer school PE. Those are adds due to enrollment increases. 6.2 is a job share at Maplewood. 6.3, retired teacher. 6.4 are two unpaid leave of absences. One is for a long-term sub, the other one was for one of our building substitutes. 6.5 is licensed administrative substitute. That is for the 21-22 school year, and just to clarify that one, she was approved as a building teacher sub, not an administrator sub, so we've got to add her on as an administrative sub. She worked a couple days at the end of the year, so that's why this is the 21-22 school year on there.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, item 6.1 through 6.5.
We're going 6 and 7.
He said 6.1 through 6.5.
Oh, he did, oh, sorry, I missed that.
You did?
I'll second. Any discussion? All right, Calderon.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochrane?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavallette?
Yes.
And Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
I'm going to ask for board approval for item 6.6, which is licensed extra duty, with various summer work going on throughout the district.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Cochrane?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavallette?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Huffman?
Epstein.
I'm going to ask for approval for items 7.1 through 7.7 on a consent agenda basis. 7.1 is for end-of-the-year bus cleaning for those individuals. 7.2 are some classified personnel for some of our summer programming support staff. 7.3, classified new hires. 7.4, 7.4 is one, classified resignation. 7.5 is classified personnel change. 7.6 is a classified retirement. Ruth Ann Bressler, 23 years of service to the district. And 7.7 are additional hours.
Move approval on a consent agenda basis, item 7.1 through 7.7.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Calderon.